Coram being present, I'll call the continuation of our annual town meeting to order now. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and join us if you wish. Thank you. Good evening, voters of Southampton. I'm Robert Floyd, your town moderator, and we're continuing to create history with a televised broadcast created yesterday and a continuation to a second night of our evening sessions of annual town meeting. I will not read all of my opening remarks. I'll make them very brief. Rule behavior, especially shouting, bullying, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Anybody unwilling to comply with these rules will be removed, so let's this be our first warning. First order business, I'm taking off my jacket. There's a lot of discussion today about reconsideration. Anyone is welcome to make a motion on that, but before that may happen, I'd like to share my thoughts with you on reconsideration. As town moderator, my intention and plan is to continue to be consistent in my beliefs, practices, and philosophy. Reconsideration is a parliamentary procedure at the sole prerogative of the town moderator. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, grants the town moderator sole power to run a town meeting. An article or motion cannot overcome that. So reconsideration is to allow for the correction of a flawed motion that has passed, or for consideration of compelling new information and is not intended as a method of changing the intent of the town meeting. For this town moderator, reconsideration is to repair a defect that was not known at the time the article-motion was settled, or a significant change of circumstances has happened such that the article-motion outcome could change upon reconsideration, or the reconsideration will be in Southampton's best interest, example violation of a lawful practice. The motion to reconsider is out of order unless there is compelling new information regarding the article to justify reconsideration in the first place. Allowing it simply because the voters have changed will be grossly unfair. We held a fair and open hearing and vote on the question last night. Southampton voters left their annual town meeting with their trusted understanding that the issues of the evening were settled. To allow reconsideration because there are some of you who are not present and do not like the decision is for me, your town moderator, the same as allowing reconsideration after the prevailing side leaves the room, which I will not allow. The bottom line is that this town moderator will not allow reconsideration based upon the fact that some voters were not present when the article's motion was considered and settled. Do I hear a motion for Article 10?
Mr. Moderator, move to see if the town will hear and enact pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44B, on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year 2015, Community Preservation Budget, and to appropriate or reserve from the CPA fund as some money in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other necessary and proper expenses in the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, including debt service for any approved community preservation projects, with each item to be considered as separate appropriations. From reserves for fiscal year 2015, estimated revenues of the historic resources reserve of $35,861.34. From fiscal year 2015, estimated revenues for open space reserve of the same amount, From fiscal year 2015, estimated revenues from community housing reserve, $35,861.34. From fiscal year 2015, estimated revenues of undesignated reserve of $251,029.98.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I will divide the question. We will discuss and vote on each section of this article. And, Virginia Ahart.
We're going, just give a brief summary of this first, what was just read.
Okay. These are the funds that have come in either from Southampton taxpayers. Okay, I'll be here a while. Either from Southampton taxpayers, or from the, some of it is interest on the funds we have, but the other part is from the state matching grant. And this past year, we did receive 100 percent matching grant. We may not get that. This next year, we never know.
Any questions, comments, and this is being televised. It is not live, as it was last night, not live. Any questions and comments on what we've heard so far? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the figures as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously. Motion on the transfer of funds, aye.
Okay. Move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $10,000 to the Edwards Public Library to fund document preservation and prepare documents for the public. Said sums to be taken from the community's preservation surcharges historical preservation account.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Would you present?
This should be the culmination of something that's been going on for some time, as the library has been copying to make our historical documents that they hold usable by the public, and with the hope that eventually they will be on a website that anyone who is interested in Southampton history may access. And they've asked for funds as this project went along, rather than asking for the total sum at one time.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously.
I move the town vote to transfer the amount of $1,500 to the Veterans Grave Officer to be used to fund the restoration of Revolutionary War and Civil War veterans monuments. And said sums shall be taken from the community preservation surcharges historical preservation account.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Would you address this?
Yes. Dick Frary is the Veterans Grave Officer. He was unable to be here, but he asked that I speak to this. We have a number of monuments, and if you look at the wars, you know how old some of those monuments are. And they are aging and crumbling and breaking. And so he, again, this has been an ongoing project to get these repaired and to preserve them.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion carries unanimously. Next.
I move the town vote to transfer the amount of $5,000 to the Veterans Grave Officer to be used to fund the purchase of 10 flat markers for veterans' graves. Said sums shall be taken from the community preservation surcharges historical preservation account.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Please address this.
Well, this again is from Mr. Frary, and I will tell you something that's a little bit interesting. These flat markers used to come free from the Veterans Administration. They could be placed by the existing stone that you might not be able to read. About two or three years ago, the Veterans Administration decided that no one could get free ones except a direct descendant of the person buried there. So even in Southampton, that some of them would be very difficult to trace, and some people don't have any direct descendants, especially if they were killed during the war. So he is now happy to purchase them, and he's again doing it over a period of time instead of asking for all the money at one time.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Move the town vote to transfer the amount of $12,700 to the Southampton Youth Athletic Association to fund renovations to the baseball field at Conant Park. Said sums shall be taken from the community preservation surcharges open space recreation account.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Oh, who will second it, rather? Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Who will speak on this?
Well, I'll make one comment first.
Okay.
Up to two years ago, community preservation funds could not be used to renovate existing parks unless they had been purchased, the land had been purchased by community preservation. Obviously, Conant Park is left out. Then the legislature changed it, and so now we are able to do upgrades and things in parks, any park in the town. I would like to defer to someone from the SYAA.
Hi, Jeff Watson, 100 Glendale Road here in Southampton. Yeah, I'm with the SYA Board. I'm also the Little League President. I've been involved with SYA now for 15 years. The Little League Presidency for 10, up until 2012, that fence at Conant Park, we've painted, we've straightened, we've painted, we've straightened, we've repaired, we've repainted, and we've straightened. So finally, now with this opportunity with the CPA funding, now we can take down the old fence, which was a safety concern, which also prevented us from playing district games for our Little League program. So it really was a safety concern, and now with this being something, it's not only for Little League and SYA, but also there are other families that come down to the park and use it for softball and other events. So it is something that's going to be in town for many, many years, and I can't tell you when that front fence was put up originally. So we appreciate the funds.
Thank you. Any other comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion carries unanimously. Next.
Move the town vote to transfer the amount of $5,000 to the Conservation Commission for improvements to the trail at the Whittmore Conservation Area. Said sums shall be taken from community preservation surcharges open space recreation account.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Who will speak on this?
Charlie.
I'm Charlie McDonald. I'm on the Conservation Commission, and as-
Charlie, hold up a sec. Can everyone hear because of the fans? Okay, Charlie, could you raise the mic up a bit? Or speak, you'll take it up.
I'm on the Conservation Commission, and this commission has responsibility, in addition to administering the Wetlands Protection Act. Thank you. Right. In addition to administering the Wetlands Protection Act, have stewardship over about 600 acres of conservation property within the town of Southampton. Prominent among these that you may be familiar with would be Wolf Hill, the Manhan Meadows, the Zipta Farm. One that you may not be that familiar with is the Nancy Whittmore Conservation Area at the end of Meadow Lane on Palmeroy Meadow, almost into East Hampton. We had an Eagle Scout project last year that opened this up. Typically, many of our properties are not very accessible.
Charlie, get it like an ice cream cone. Get real close to it because of the fans.
Move right up.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Basically, one of these, one of these properties is the Whittmore, Nancy Whittmore. It's 35 acres. It's opposite another parcel in East Hampton on the other side of the Manhan, which is called Palmeroy Meadow Trail. And we have been encouraged by developing this site to eventually connect these two parcels via an engineered bridge. And the Department of Conservation and Recreation have encouraged us to make an application for this. So this money will be used to enhance what was done by the Eagle Scout Project last summer and extend the trail down to the river.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on this motion. All those in favor, motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion carries by majority. Next.
I move the town vote to transfer the amount of $2,500 to the Conservation Commission for the completion of the hiking map for Wolf Hill and Zipta Conservation Areas and to provide trail signs for the Wolf Hill Conservation Area. Said sums shall be taken from the community preservation surcharges open space recreation account.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Who will speak on this?
Again, Charlie McDonald, 45 Rattle Hill Road. I don't know if I identified my location. What we're doing here, what we're doing here is coming up with hiking maps. In the past, you've probably seen a map like this. We developed, that map covers all the conservation lands in the town of Southampton. What we're attempting to do is to come up with hiking maps for two of our sites, the Zipta Farm and Wolf Hill. Again, we're getting help from, in this case, the Girl Scouts in developing these maps. This is an example of what it looks like. It's smaller, but it's all got new GPS data. And the object is to come up with a professional map. We're working with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and we'll be outlining a number of features on these properties such that we can show people in the town where the hiking trails are and what historical artifacts are on the properties.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jennifer Berge, 134 Brickyard Road. I think this is fantastic news. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on this motion. All those in favor of this motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously. Next.
Move the town vote to transfer the sum, the amount of $10,000, to fund the operating expenses of the Community Preservation Committee. Said sums shall be taken from the Community Preservation Surcharges Undesignated Account.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded?
This is the one we do every year, so we'll have operating money. We never use, we have never used all we ask for, and it goes back into undesignated, but this would cover such things as our own expenses if somebody wanted to go to a conference and we had to pay a registration fee, things like that. But we also occasionally use it to do the appraisal of a piece of property that the town might be interested in buying, and we can't wait until a town meeting, and we can use that as our operating expenses also. But we've never used the full amount.
Thank you. Any other comments, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously. We're good?
We're at the last one.
All sections of this article?
No, no. We've got one more.
Go ahead. Yes, right, right. I turned the page too quickly. My bad.
Move the town vote to transfer the sum, the amount of $40,000, to the Public Safety Complex account to fund the public safety building complex feasibility study that a build, that a, for a building that fits the historical character of Southampton, including consideration of the old firehouse, the sum of which shall be taken from Community Preservation Surcharges Historical Preservation.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this? Charlie?
Good evening. Charlie Kinecki, 146 Valley Road, Southampton. The Building Committee has been in existence for the past three years doing the research relative to the fire and police stations, and moving forward to try to establish to bring us into the 20th century. With that, we are to the point of establishing some type of approach relative to where the present old fire station is located. We need the $40,000 so we can now start moving into the professional realm of hiring an engineer and architect to look at the properties and to look at the resources that we need to put into those buildings so that we can have a viable approach to this construction. This money is not to construct. This money is to, they can do the preliminary planning.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
I'll add one thing. I don't know how many of you know that the firehouse is actually one of our schools. It's been added on to and built on, but it was the school that was here in the center of town. We always tell people the one at Conant Park is our last old school, but the skeleton of another one is here, and if it can be used in some way as a part to commemorate our history, this study should help determine that.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of this motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously, and I will now read the little note I was writing that distracted me before. All sections of this article have been voted on and acted on. No further votes are needed. Do I hear a motion for Article 11, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer a sum of $20,401 to fund the amortization of the WPAT bonds. Said sums shall be taken from the WPAT loan repayment account.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Who would like to address this?
This money is the amount of money owed to the Commonwealth for any septic repairs and loan that we had in the past.
Everybody hear that? I'm having problems hearing it too, and I think it's that fan back there. I hate to turn it off, but we don't have 386 people like we did-
Can you hear me now?
...last night, so what do we think? Just, we'll all talk closer to the mic, or we'll shut it off if somebody's going over there to shut it off? Big difference. Thank you.
All right, let's try again. Can you hear me?
Any comments or questions on Article 11? Can we repeat it? Sure. Would you repeat it, please, select woman, Moulton?
The $20,000 is the amount of a loan that we owe to the Commonwealth for septic repairs.
Comments, questions? We'll vote. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion under Article 11, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion carries unanimously. Who will give the motion for Article 12?
I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $50,000 to fund the EMS ambulance-related expenses. Such sum shall be taken from the ambulance fees account.
Thank you. Second. Anyone want to address this, please? Yes. That was quicker than last night.
The ambulance fees account was established as a special revenue account back in, I think it was 1984, for the ambulance fees to be used for related ambulance expenses, and every year, we've taken money out of that ambulance fee account to subsidize the general fund for any ambulance expenses that we have. And this is the amount of money that we can pretty much take out without, we can only take out whatever's in there, and this is a reasonable amount to take out of that fund right now because that's pretty much all we have, so.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 12, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion carries unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 13, please?
Article 13, move the town vote to transfer the sum of $10,000 to fund the police department wages for EMS/ambulance-related expenses. Said sums shall be taken from the ambulance fee account.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please? Vicki? Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant.
Sorry, Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant, Palmeroy Meadow Road. Since 2011, the police chief has come forward and asked for this $10,000 for the ambulance fees to supplement his budget because all of his officers are EMT certified and they're first responders on the scene, and this is to cover those costs.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes. Oh, you don't, okay. Any comments? Oh, come right up. By the way, for those who weren't here last night, when you have a comment, question, just step right up, come right up to the mic, stand in line. No need to separate. Again, this isn't-
Judy Keener, County Road. I think I understand you, but your last comment was on the fire department, the prior, we have depleted it. So is this $10,000 they're asking for going to deplete it more? I don't think so, but I thought your last comment was the, the thing, the budget was depleted, so please, please explain.
No, no, I didn't mean to say that the, my, I didn't mean to say that the budget was depleted. It was a comfortable amount of money to take out so that we wouldn't deplete it for, you know, future costs for ambulance services.
That answer your question? Good. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion under Article 13. All in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 14, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to create an ambulance stabilization fund in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, and to transfer the sum of $25,000 from the ambulance fees account to the ambulance stabilization fund. The purpose of the ambulance stabilization fund is to purchase future ambulance vehicles or take any action related thereto.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who will address this, please? Vicki Morrow?
In speaking with the auditors, Melanson and Heath, who audit our financial books in regards to ambulance fees, they had made a suggestion that instead of trying to always balance out this ambulance fee account with money that you've taken out, money that you've put, put in, to establish a stabilization fund for the ambulance in particular, so that when the time comes that we need to buy a new ambulance, we have that money set aside specifically for that purpose. And, you know, in talking with the chief, we, we chose the $25,000 to start that, and he has a plan of when the, you know, the fire ambulance will need to be, you know, renewed as a new vehicle, and so we're going to go forward and continuing to put money into this account, and you can't use it for anything but an ambulance specifically, where currently the revolving fund was set up to use for ambulance-related expenses. And, you know, in five years from now, if none of us are here, at least this will be there so that people won't keep, you know, taking money out of that ambulance fee account. So this is specifically for purchasing a new ambulance. Currently, there is $144,000 in that account, so.
Thank you. Any other comments, any other questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. This requires a, a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor of this motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously, meeting the requirement of the majority two-thirds vote. May I hear a motion for Article 15, please?
Article 15, move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $254,761 for the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund, or take any action related thereto, to be funded from the following sources. Permits: $78,500. Charges: $63,919. Bag fees: $85,000. Recycling: $17,000. Investment income: $500. Water pollution abatement trust subsidies: $9,842, for a total of $254,761. To be expended as following. Salary and wages: $55,135. Operating expenses: $159,63. Debt service, principal and interest: $21,440. Indirect costs is $19,120, for a total of $254,761.
Thank you. Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who will address this motion?
Randall Kemp, Fomer Road. This is the Enterprise Fund for the Transfer Station. Expenditures: equal revenue, so unless anybody has any questions about that.
Randall Kemp's our Highway Superintendent. Any questions? Any comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion presented under Article 15, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion under Article 15 passes unanimously. On the way over here tonight, I saw about 20, 25 vehicles in the cemetery, and I was a little nervous. I thought this was extra people, more than last night, but it was the Boy Scouts and others doing flag duty for the upcoming Memorial Day Parade. Do I hear a motion under Article 16, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $687,248 for the Water Enterprise Fund, or take any action related thereto, to be funded from the following sources. I'd like to waive reading the individual accounts unless you folks would like me to.
Everybody have the accounts in front of them? Thank you. Anybody want to address this, please?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would, who would like to make a presentation on this, please? Okay, Ed Colley?
Like all enterprise funds, expenses come in, and fees come in, and they're a balancing act. You can only spend what you take in, so these are what the funds are for, the water department, and the expenditures are so noted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented under Article 16, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 16 carries unanimously. May I hear a motion under Article 17, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town, in pursuant of the provisions of Section 53E and a half of Chapter 44 of Massachusetts General Law, vote to authorize the operation of revolving funds for certain town departments for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2014, with specific receipts credited to each fund, the purpose for which each fund may spend the maximum that may be spent from each fund for the fiscal year as follows. Okay, we have plumbing, which is $15,000, electrical inspections, which is $15,000, planning board is $15,000, zoning board of appeals, $3,000, council on aging van, $20,000, dog licensing and control, $8,000.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who will make a presentation on this motion?
These are revolving funds, whatever fees we collect, we pay out, and these are just the limits of what we can actually pay out in these funds. So it's no cost to the town, it's just the limit of what they can spend out of whatever they've collected.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Concerns? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of approving the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. May I hear a motion under Article 18, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move to have the town vote to transfer the sum of $9,000 to the fire, to the fire department. For structural firefighting, turnout gear, and related equipment, said sum shall be taken from the operating stabilization fund, or take any action related to thereto.
Motion made, do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded, Fire Chief?
John Workman, Fire Chief. Mr. Moderator, in, as I took over the fire department in October, some of the big challenges in front of us were really identifying the shortfalls of the department in regards to equipment and just budgetary type things. With the equipment, with our structural firefighting gear, we only, for 28 firefighters, we only have five sets of gear that meet, meet national standard. This was put on, I tried to put it into my operating expense budget, because I believe what we need to do is to have gear that is replaced, three sets every year over 10 years, which would allow us, after 10 years, to be completely compliant. So rather than a large expenditure right off the bat, that would be a large expense to the town right now, I, I tried to moderate it over 10 years to make up for the deficiency, and I'd like to do it as a revolving in my expense budget. Because it didn't make it into the expense line item because of our fiscal restraints, I brought it to the floor tonight. So this is what that is for.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Comments? Yes. Could you come up here and, mic please? Thank you.
At the point of-
Wait, wait till you get up here, that's a little journey.
Is this already in our budget, this amount of money, or does this have to come out of some other fund?
This comes out of a stabilization fund.
This, this, please come up to the mic and, okay.
Convi Stoll, Jonathan, Johnson Circle. The money will come, you're saying, from the stabilization fund?
That's correct.
And that's part of our budget, so it doesn't unbalance our budget in any way?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
Okay, what's your going back? Time out. Sandy and Charlie, could you slide the bench right in front of Sandy over a bit, to get a little bit more passage? There's a gap there, we can use it. The bench in front of you, Sandy. Just have, have, slide that over, because there's a very narrow passage. That's it. Excellent, excellent, thank you. Any other questions on the motion under Article 18? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented, we need a two-thirds vote, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion carries unanimously, meeting our requirement for the two-thirds majority vote. May I hear a motion under Article 19, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $33,000 to the Police Department wages. Said sum shall be taken from the operating stabilization fund.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded?
Good evening. Chief Silvernail from the Police Department. This article originally would have been intended to buy a police car this year. We had bypassed or passed over buying a car last year because of the fiscal issues, and so originally had been seeking to replace that car again, when we did the budget hearings back in February with the Finance Committee. Since then, a few weeks ago, we learned just about how terrible of a shape that we're in, and so I had asked that instead of buying a car this year, which we desperately need to replace, that we instead use that money to put back into police wages to prevent the layoff of a police officer. The Police Department's taking right now over a $62,000 cut, and part of that, without putting this $33,000 back into wages, will absolutely mean a layoff of an officer. That would be the newest officer that we put on about a year and a half ago. That officer's assigned to the day shift. Without that officer, it's going to drastically reduce our ability to maintain appropriate patrols throughout town, reduce our ability to respond to school shooters. There'll be times where there'll be one officer on duty if we don't retain this officer. So it's very important to me, and I believe to the rest of the town, to make sure that we retain the officer that we put on last year.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments, questions? If you, you can step up to the mic.
Susan Sussman, Nine Golden Circle, both on this issue and the one prior, how do these relate to-
Well, just this issue.
If, okay, on this issue, the, the, this transfer, if we pass the two and a half override, that's even more expense money going in, so will this transfer then go back to the fund if the two and a half override passes?
Vicki, you want to handle that?
No, it'll, the, this stands alone, it's a, it's a separate item from the two and a half budget, so we'd have to go back to town, meaning if this passes, to undo it.
Does that answer your question? Say, yes, Heather?
I guess.
Yeah. Heather would like to speak. Give her a mic.
It's our town administrator.
Hi, Heather Madrywitz, town administrator. So when we went through the whole budget process with the chief, what ended up happening was we cut out the $33,000 to be able to save the money in the budget. With this article, what it does is it puts the $33,000 in. When we went over to the prop two and a half budget, the $33,000 is still cut from the budget because we had this article. We weren't going to put the article and then take the article away, the article wasn't going to be contingent on one budget or the other budget. So the police wages line is dependent on this article for both the regular budget and the prop two and a half budget, to supplement those budgets with this actual number right here, the $33,000. Now, in operating expenses, because this comes out of operating, these are one of the two stabilization accounts I was talking about previously. This stabilization account currently has approximately $135,000 in it, so it has the funds to be able to take these two out and sustain okay at this time.
Thank you. Does that answer you?
I guess my confusion lies in the fact that there's a, in the balanced budget that we passed, it was $50,000 for Police Department expenses, and the two and a half, it's 62, so that's $12,000 extra, so.
But that's expenses, that's not the wa, that's not the wages, that's different. When you go from, when you go down budgets with all of the different departments, they have wage lines and they have expense lines, and they're affected slightly different based on, you know, the amounts we had, we took the, whatever amount we needed to from the actual budgets, but where it came from was the individual discretion of most of the department heads, as to whether it was coming mostly out of salaries or expenses. It was however we could make it work the best, so that they could function the best they could in their department if they have to operate under the balanced budget. So with this $33,000, it goes into the wage line directly, and without this, it would still be $33,000 shy in the prop two and a half.
But the wage, okay, then in that line item, the wages in the budget we passed, the balanced budget was $558,000, and in the prop two and a half, it's $635,000. That's quite an increase, Mr. Moderator, so why doesn't that cover this? If you're saying it comes out of wages and not expenses, that's quite an increase.
Well, as the chief previously mentioned, he said that there was a significant amount of money that was cut from the budget, and the amount of money that was cut still isn't made up when we replace with the, without replacing the $33,000. The $33,000 was helping supplement the cut.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, and it's a two-thirds majority required. All those in favor of approving the motion under Article 19, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion carries unanimously, meeting the two-thirds requirement. Do I hear a motion under Article 20, please?
Mr. Moder, uh, Moderator, excuse me. Ask the town to vote to transfer $5,000 to the Public Safety Complex account, to fund the public safety building complex survey work and appraisal work to acquire the Bray property.
I'm going to interrupt. Is the intent, I was told the intent on this was to pass over, then I need- That's my mistake. -I need the motion to pass over, since we, we didn't accept the motion and we didn't seconded it, it's not on the floor, so. All right, I'll try Article 21, sir. So, so, is that- Make a mo- Mr. Moderator, we're going to pass over Article 20. Okay, there's a motion on the floor to pass over, indefinitely postpone Article 20. Do I hear a second? Okay. Anybody want to explain why?
So on Article 20, what Article 20 had originally been was money to actually fund the appraisal of the Bray property. The Bray property is the property that's located adjacent to Town Hall and in the same lot, essentially right behind the fire station. What had happened at the, one of the last CPC meetings, is the Public Safety Complex met with the CPA, and they discussed available funds to actually be able to help them out with this. So earlier, we had a speaker who mentioned that some of the operating expense funds that they have helps go towards things that need to be done on a timely basis, but don't necessarily have time to wait for meetings to be able to accrue those funds, and this was one of those cases. So this $5,000 was already taken from the operating expenses of the CPC, so we are all set with this. We no longer need it from capital expenditures.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? We're going to vote to take no action, and definitely postpone this article. All in favor of taking no action? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Passes unanimously. There is a difference between tabling and taking no action, and definitely postpone. If there's no motion on the floor, the, already, the motion to pass over and definitely postpone comes under that article. Once the motion is on the floor, then tabling it, killing it, is the verbiage. Do I hear a motion for Article 21, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town will vote to transfer the sum of $3,000 to Police Department for vests. Said sum shall be taken from the capital stabilization fund, or take any action related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address that?
Chief Silvernail. Now, Mr. Moderator, this article is being presented- Now, Mr. Moderator, this article is being presented, it was also presented in previous years. The purpose of this is to have money available to be able to replace a vest that wears out or gets damaged, or to be able to buy vests for new officers. I hope to put on three more part-time officers throughout the next year. By having this separate line item will prevent me from having to take it out of my regular expenses, which have already been drastically reduced in addition to the wages cut that I've taken this year. Vests are not typically something I put into the regular expense budget. It's also an item that we are subject to getting reimbursed from by the feds and the state, and so by not having money in that account, again, it would require me to have to take money out of the regular police expenses. Currently, there is $1,000 in that account, but I would like to have, you know, a little bit more in there to be able to cover these expenses.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote, we need a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion as presented under Article 21, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously satisfying the requirement of a two-thirds majority vote. Do I hear a motion under Article 22, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $10,000 to the Police Department for emergency equipment related to active shooter response. Said sum shall be taken from the capital stabilization fund.
Motion made, do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded? Would you like to address that, please, sir?
Chief Silvernail. This article is also another article that I had on last year, and we passed over because of our fiscal situation last year. It never got readressed. This is, would be the second part in a multi-stage effort to buy equipment for the police officers to be able to respond to active shooters. Active shooters are workplace shooters, school shooters. Obviously, after the incident in Newtown, Connecticut, this issue and lack of equipment and training that the Police Department had, it was quite clear that we were ill-prepared to actually, you know, respond appropriately to an active shooter. So the, last year, prior to last fiscal year, we had a special town meeting where we did appropriate $10,000 to buy some ballistic shields that could be carried in the trunks of the cruisers, to buy some additional rifles for some officers to be able to take those at home, so that we can, when we call officers from home, that they don't have to go to the station first and arm themselves, they'll have equipment right at their homes to be able to come directly here to the school. The national standard for active shooter response is to go directly to the shooting scene and engage and stop the shooter as soon as possible. So additional equipment is needed to continue on equipping our officers appropriately. Some of the things that I would like to get with this money is protective headgear, protective eye gear, things like knee pads and elbow pads, things like that. Currently, the other thing I want to get was better ballistic vests for the officers. Currently, what the officers have is their vest that they wear under a shirt. That vest, in reality, there's, I guess there's, you could say there's a misunderstanding on what vests can and cannot do. Commonly, vests are referred to as bulletproof vests, and there's nothing bulletproof about them. They're really bullet resistant. Many common calibers will go right through the soft vests that the officers wear. So one of the things that I would like to get for the officers is a better ballistic vest that goes over what they're wearing, provides much better coverage. A typical police vest under the shirt covers from above the waist to below the neck. These better ballistic vests will give some neck protection, some groin protection, and, you know, there's also training that I would like to be able to have officers go through. Couple times a year, we have active shooter lockdown drills. We've also come in on the weekends to the school here and have done dry training, but there's a long ways for us to go to get fully prepared to respond to these types of things.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments, questions? Yes.
I remember visiting this last year. I believe we, and I believe you said we.
You need to address me when you go over there, we can't hear.
We purchased several shields in order to, after the Connecticut shooting. How many did we purchase? Also, something about more rifles. But I didn't think we allowed the rifles to go home with the officers. I may be mistaken. I know we're only addressing this issue, but the one prior is asking for more vests for new and incoming officers. He's now asking, which I agree with, better vest, but can't somewhere, some of these be passed down or reused, so that we're not spending extra money, but still protecting the officers? So that's, those are my questions, I believe.
Thank you. Chief, could you summarize?
Yes, absolutely. The vests that I would like to purchase with this article, as I said, are a much larger, thicker, heavier, more resistant vest than what the officers are wearing under their As to the question about whether or not they can be passed down, we currently don't have any of the large over-type vests. That's a different item than what we bought last year, which was a hard Kevlar shield with a window in it that the officers can kind of try to hide behind, but it's about this wide and perhaps about this tall. And only the officer first in line, as officers enter into an area where there's a shooting, has that ballistic shield. Everybody else just has what they wear under their shirt. In so far as passing down the vest that's worn under the shirt, quite bluntly, that would be like passing down used underwear to somebody. That vest has a five-year shelf life. The officers are perspiring in those vests, you cannot wash them, you can't put them in the washing machine. Because of the Kevlar weave in those vests, the only thing you're allowed to do with them is wipe them down with some warm soapy water and pat dry them very quickly. So vests do not get passed from one officer, the undershirt vests do not get passed on from one officer to another, and they, as well as the perspiration breaks down the Kevlar weave, and that's why we have to replace them every five years.
Thank you. Did that answer your question?
Rivals were the only other.
The rifles, while I don't recall that we specifically talked at the meeting about rifles going home with officers, but they'll do no good locked up in the station, and then requiring an officer to say, who lives on Palmeri Meadow Road, to have to drive right by the school shooter, go down to the station, unlock a locker, draw a weapon, and then have to drive back up here. The common sense approach to that is to issue these officers these rifles to take home. We already issue them sidearms. They're trained, they're qualified, they're professional officers, and there's no, I see no difference between issuing them sidearms or rifles as far as an issue of responsibility or the fact that they have them at home. I did initiate a policy to include the rifles that the officers are required to safely store and secure them at their homes.
Thank you, Chief. Can that answer your question? Any more comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we'll vote. This requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion as presented under Article 22, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously, satisfying our two-thirds majority requirement. Do I hear a motion under Article 23, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $38,000 to the ambulance EMS expense account for cardiac monitor and related equipment. Such sum shall be taken from the capital stabilization fund.
Motion made and, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded, Chief Workman.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, Chief Workman. This here, let me just start off by saying that we have a tremendous group of firefighters who had really stepped up prior to my arrival in October, and put together what was needed for the town to bring the ambulance into an advanced level of care for the ambulance. Part of doing that was getting monitors that would satisfy state requirements. We did this two ways. One is we had gotten a monitor that East Hampton Fire Department was discarding, we got it for very short money because it's an old monitor, and that satisfies our backup ambulance. Our primary ambulance runs a monitor, a cardiac monitor that we had borrowed from West Hampton Fire Department. On my arrival in October, one of the first things that I set out to do in the first three weeks when I became chief, was to file for a federal grant, a FEMA grant, that would cover the cost of two monitors. The old one that really needs replacement, and the one that we have borrowed from West Hampton. I'm still waiting to hear back on that grant. If that grant is successful, this money would go back to the town. If it's not successful, this money would purchase one monitor and at least keep us in service at that advanced level of care.
Thank you, Chief Workman. Any questions? Yes.
First of all, I want the Fire Department to have all the equipment they need, because they may be saving me someday. Okay, but I guess the question is, why can't we?
Address me, sir.
Oh, sir, yes. Why can't we keep the one we borrowed until the applications for the grants go through and we hear the response?
Okay, understand your question, Chief Workman?
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Moderator, the one that we borrowed from West Hampton, there's a verbal understanding with Chief Norris from West Hampton, that we will be returning that monitor back to him in July, and so we really need to deal with that issue now. The other problem we have is if our backup monitor fails to function, then I may be back up here for a second monitor. So I do hope that the grant is successful, I do hope that this money gets returned back to us. It's been gracious of West Hampton to lend us their monitor. We need to be cognizant of what their needs are, and so we really need to get a monitor so we can give theirs back to them.
Thank you, Chief Workman. Did that answer your question, Mr. Sussman? Thank you. Any other questions, any other concerns, any other comments? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion as presented under Article 23, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion carries unanimously, satisfying our two-thirds majority requirement. This concludes our business for the night. Last evening, one of my favorite comments was, "We need fresh minds to carry on town business." The concept, let's not go beyond our bylaw of 10 o'clock. Thank you, Ms. Jean Domina, our elected town clerk, our counters, Officer Bosier, ECA T., who's been fantastic, Paul Fish and his crew in filming this for us. Thank you all for your valued participations. I will entertain a motion now to dissolve our annual town meeting. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I hereby dissolve our 2014 annual town meeting. Thank you so much for coming back, especially second night. Safe home.